Bertha Dennight. Bertha Dennight is meeting to discuss the future of Leake and Mawlands Hospital and its services. There will be a public participation session and then all councillors will be invited to speak by the chair. The chair tonight will be our General Berthas' chairman, councillor Brian Johnson. If you would speak during the public participation session, please raise your hand in the open. Thank you.
Good evening ladies and gentlemen. It's nice to see such a full house for such an important matter. I'd like to just start off by explaining that this is a Leake Town Council meeting, not as some people seem to think, a public meeting. So we will try to run it with a reasonable amount of decorum and keep to the protocol. You will all be aware that both this council and the district council, following loads of debate, have all indicated that we are all, as councils, both district and town, fully in favour and determined to keep the services and facilities of an hospital in Leake. So we're all singing from the same sheet. We've all, at District Council, those officers at District Councils, all voted for the resolution to write to the Department of Health and National Health and asked them to intervene in what was happening at the hospital. So I'm hoping that, you know, you will appreciate that everybody is of the same mind. I did learn something today which I don't know whether everybody knows or not. But there is a new facility service, whatever you call it, being introduced, as I believe it was the first step count, where GP services have now got extended hours. I understand from four in the afternoon to late at night during the week, and Saturday mornings and Sunday mornings. I also understand that as far as Leake is concerned, that GPs working together are going to be delivering those additional hours from the Mawlands Hospital. So I think that's a small step in the right direction. It's no practice that at all Town Council meetings we start with a public participation session. Normally that is only 15 minutes. I appreciate that normally we only have one or two people in the public gallery on a normal Town Council meeting. And we've got slightly more tonight, so obviously there will have to be some restrictions on how many people can speak for how long. Can I ask those who would like to speak specifically to raise their hands please? One, two, three, four. Right, okay, that's fine because that means that people then can have a reasonable amount of time. I'm not going to sort of bang the hammer down after five minutes and say that's it. We'll see how the two pans are having. You know, expect everybody to just use common sense a little bit, not doing that for 20 minutes, saying everything that's probably already been said before. Chris, can we start with you please? Oh, sorry Stephen, yes, I apologise. For the benefit of anybody who doesn't know all the councillors, can we ask the councillors to introduce themselves please? Can we start with councillor Coleman? Can you use your microphone please because they continue to gather here?
Councillor Sue Coleman and I'm on the Town Council.
Councillor Margaret, I'm on the Town Council and on the District Council.
Councillor Pam Wardour, I'm on the Town Council and the District Council for Leake East and the Chair of Save the Hospital Action Room.
Charlotte Atkins, Lady Councillor for Town and District and County.
Councillor Stephen Wells, I'm Town Councillor for Virg.
Councillor Keith Harrison, District and Town Council, Leake South.
Councillor Mary Henry, Town and District Councillor for Leake West.
Councillor John Povey, Head of Town Council.
Councillor Roy Tompkins, Town Councillor for Virg.
Councillor Gail Lockie, Town Councillor and District Councillor.
Councillor Neil Parkmore, Town and District Councillor for Leake West.
I'm councillor Brian Johnson, Town Councillor and District Councillor for Leake East. Okay, Chris?
Thank you. This meeting tonight is about discussing the most important local issue affecting everybody in the community, the future of our health services. I'd like to know what the Town Council is doing to help safeguard the future of our health services, which events have shown are under serious threat. I will just remind you of a few of the events so far. At a pre-consultation meeting last October, the North Staffordshire Clinical Commissioning Group, the CCG, asked us what services we want and what additional services can we do better? While behind the scenes, with no consultation, acting beyond their legal mandate, they closed all the beds at our community hospital. This was the beginning of their dismantling of our services by stealth. They called it temporary, giving an expectation, a sense of hope. Their insistence that bed closures are temporary was called a myth by the Independent Reconfiguration Panel, that's the body which advises the government on NHS service change. They were referred to by the Stoke-on-Trent City Council in this case. The IRP criticised the CCG for their actions, which were more about financial savings than making the case for change. Mawlands patients, as we know, were then sent into a state-of-the-court care home in Stoke-on-Trent. We then read in the Care Quality Commission's report in November last year that of such unacceptable standards that the care home was promptly closed. They'd been monitoring it for 18 months. It was not safe, not caring, not responsive, not effective and not well-led. Mawlands people will continue to be at disadvantage while our beds, until our beds are reinstated and in the absence of elements of inspection reports by the CCG, are possibly continuing to suffer inadequate care. We don't know. Next, we heard the CCG close the phlebotomy, blood testing and physiotherapy services and relocated these to Stoke-on-Trent. Again, with no consultation and beyond their legal powers. The CCG does what it wants. It is not honest, it's not open, it's not genuine in its public engagement. In early August, the CCG made a formal application to the Staffordshire County Council Health Scutiny Select Committee for the relocation of the so-called Tier Four services to the University Hospital of North Midlands to be classed as not substantive. Very important words taken from the Health Act of 2006 and therefore not requiring consultation. This was not one service but 10 services. The request was of short notice, it was urgent. A reply being required in barely two weeks in the height of the holiday season, when many councillors were predictably unavailable. But the CCG is well aware that any change of site from which NHS services are delivered would normally be a substantive change and therefore require consultation with the local authority and the public. This is set out very clearly in the NHS England's Guide, Planning, Assuring and Delivering Service Change for Patients. So what was their objective? This formal application described a confidential paper as a blatant attempt to steal, to close 10 important outpatient services at the hospital used by so many people, without public consultation. I'll read the list of services because people will not know. It's the colorectal service, dermatology, nephrology to do with kidneys, neurology affecting so many people with strokes and all kinds of other issues, ear, nose and throat services. This is a big one. Interdisciplinary Muscular Skeletal Pain Assessment and Community Treatment. That's what you call IMPACT. That's to do with relief from chronic pain. Gynecology, trauma and orthopaedic. That treats conditions of the muscular skeletal system, bones and joints, but also ligaments, tendons, muscles and nerves. Ophthalmology and general surgery, all to be removed a couple of weeks ago with no reference to the public domain. The CCG failed in this attempt and they succeeded. These 10 important services would have been relocated with no public consultation and no need to discuss the issue in the public domain. The second issue I want to ask you about and to focus on is that we may hear in the future of new ideas from the CCG for new ways of providing our health services. In any discussion about the future of our health services, I want to know that this Town Council recognises the value of the Leake-Mawlands Hospital facilities as a major current public investment. Only recently, a spending of £5.1 million, with most of the departments being brand-new or renewed and completely over, and their systems of safety unfit for future. And that the council highly values its state-of-the-art facilities as fit for the future in meeting the immediate and future needs of our community and that it will therefore fight to ensure the hospital is central to planning the future of our health services. And let's keep at the forefront that we are a massive rural population of 95,000 people over some 200 square miles. The model size for a hospital, you may not be aware, is 30,000 to 70,000 people. Clearly, we more than qualify for a hospital with beds for rehabilitation, intermediate care, step-up beds referred from GPs and end-of-life and a full range of services. It could make no sense whatsoever to tear away our health services and relocate them 14 miles away at the University Hospital. And finally, the evidence shows the CCG has again and again failed in its commitment to be open, transparent and genuine and to show concern for the quality of our services and not solely cost-cutting. It's not learned the lessons from after the reprimand of the IRP. The Commissioning Group continues to proceed in an unregulated manner, ignoring calls from the public and answers only to the government. This is not acceptable. Mindful that our community will be involved shortly in full consultation in the autumn, I would like to know that this council will strongly object to the abuse that we've seen from the CCG and will urge the Staffordshire County Council as designated health authority to refer the CCG's performance to the Secretary of State for Health. As local people, we rely on you to speak out on our behalf in public to official bodies on all occasions, not as a designated health authority but as our elected representatives, to safeguard our local health services. Thank you.
Thank you Chris, I was very succinct and I appreciate that. The question was at the start, what is Leake Town Council doing? So can I answer that to councillors? Do councillors want to come back on and answer that question on what they think exactly? Councillor Wells?
Can I start by offering the apologies to the people that haven't come to this meeting? I wrote to each of these and invited them to the meeting tonight and the apologies received are as follows. Right honourable Karen Bradley, MP Staffordshire-Mawlands, responded after one week to say she couldn't make it. Councillor Civil Ralph, SMDC leader of the council, gave me a verbal response after two further phone calls. Dr Richard Harling, Staffordshire County Council Director of Care and Health, he's the head man. I got an email from his PA, I requested a call back, that never came. Councillor Barbara Hughes, SMDC Chair, Health Overview and Scrutiny Panel, a verbal response only after two phone calls, can't make it tonight and can't make it to any other meeting in the future. Councillor Alan White, Staffordshire County Council Co-Chair, Health and Wellbeing. I got an email from Alan, he declined an additional invitation to the next Town Council meeting. He is Deputy Leader of Staffordshire County Council.
Right, so does any of the councillors wish to address Chris's question? What is the Town Council doing? Councillor Ward?
Chair, I've got the statement title to read now and if it wouldn't answer any of Chris's questions, it's more or less asking the Town Council.
We're in public participation and the public or a member of the public has asked a question. So if we take it in that way, once we've done the public participation, if councillors then want to continue the debate, that's fine, isn't it? Councillor Atkins?
In terms of what the Town Council has done collectively, I think so far very little. What individuals have done themselves, obviously I sit on the Health Scutiny Committee, both at the SMDC, both at the district and at the county. And what we do at the county is we are the main committee that holds the NHS local bodies to account, is that we heavily scrutinise then on what's called, big mouthful here, a sustainability transformation plan for Staffordshire and Stoke-on-Trent. And it's about holding them to account because what we've tried to give us is the idea that somehow being treated at home, home first they call it, is somehow better than being treated in our wonderful local community hospital. As Chris says, the Independent Reconfiguration Panel, a government body, has already blown that out of the water because they say very clearly in their report following inquiry into the closure of community beds that it wasn't about improving services, it was about cost-cutting. So I think it's important that we hold them to account for what they are doing. And what we also have to do as a Town Council is to ensure that we don't just talk about services. Now, Civil Ralph is the leader of the District Council, has spoken about how we want to keep the existing services, but has been relatively quiet on the issue of the beds. 37 beds were temporarily closed. And Pam and I have been to, I can't even count them, endless, endless, interminable meetings. I think they have been about trying to wear us down actually, to try and demonstrate that somehow these beds aren't necessary, but they are. And it's up to the Town Councils, well as the district and the county, to make sure that we have services fit for purpose in the local community. Because we have a relatively aged population in Leake-Mawlands and therefore we need those beds. The SDP, the partnership, the energy partnership locally, have decided that instead of having something like 270 community beds, we only need 132. And don't be lulled in the force of security that these 132 beds are going to be hospital beds. They will be hospital and care home beds or nursing home beds.
Councillor Atkins, can I just stop you now because that sounds like a statement that goes to answer Chris's question about what is the Town Council doing? I've quite happily come back to you a little later today. Would any of the councillors like to make a comment at this stage?
I mean clearly as local representative of constituency, as councillor Johnson said from the outside, I think there are a few issues that you answered, but let's just clear the one that you answered in interview and that we want to retain, the hospital services and the national services that we've got. So as a collective, I think previously we have all been somewhat shocked about the implementation of the Home First strategy from the CCG and we've all been pretty appalled by the conduct of the CCG and the chief executive in particular. I think the Town Council did move something around having a lack of confidence in the chief executive for the CCG already and the same has been done at the District Council as well, is my understanding. As an authority, the Town Council have got very little influence, as far as the Staffordshire, it may not be a Staffordshire consultant, but it is being consulted in terms of consultation and that's how we are responding. So we also respond as individual councillors and sure as individual councillors, as councillor Ward, councillor Atkins, as a debate, have been to number of meetings, other people have been to number of meetings, both public and council and representing constituency who have expressed concern, have confirmed, emailed, visited the house, at home and engaged with the CCG and absolutely discussed the issue much down with people who've got a degree of influence around this as well. For example, the leader of the SMDC council, councillor Ralph, Karen Bradley, both of whom put out statements in relation to the hospital and we will work together collectively to deliver or we'll try to influence the best possible for the people at Leake and the people around the area of the Mawlands.
Thank you. The next speaker, delay it a bit, can you just give us your name please because I'm sorry, I don't like to say names.
Yes, me too, I'm Elizabeth. I'd like to make a statement from a personal and professional perspective. As you can see, 14 weeks ago I was sustained quite a nasty ankle fracture and was referred to Macclesfield Hospital. Subsequent care, surgery and treatment after that surgery and a lengthy outpatient department visit, if some of you will have endured. Six weeks after discharge, I was referred to the physiotherapist and I had to fight quite hard for that physiotherapy care to take place at Leake-Mawlands, not at Macclesfield. Eventually through the GP, I was referred to Leake-Mawlands. Now I'm lucky in that I've got carers, I've got transport and I can travel to outpatient department. But as Charlotte was saying, there's a lot of people in Leake-Mawlands and in Asian population that haven't got that facility. They have got carers, they haven't got transport and they're often on a low income. Access to that outpatient care is very problematic. And that expenditure is always undertaken by the patient, not anyone else. So not only are they ill, they're also having that increased burden. And that takes place in an already very overstretched hospital service anyway, where you're waiting a long time, you can't park etcetera, as we all probably know. On a professional note, from 17 years old to retirement, I was a nurse and substitute doctor and have always been mindful of what the NHS is saying. And the current government's NHS commitment is to moving healthcare closer to the community. That's their reason for being, if you like. And that should be reflected in the Clinical Commissioning Group's commitment and moving care closer to home. So simply, I would like to ask why services are not being referred to from hospitals? There are services in Leake that are more than fit for purpose. They've been refurbished at a vast expense, as we all know. There are highly trained professionals on-site that have been underutilised and mindful of the fact that the closer care is to home, that improves recovery. Where there's improved recovery, that improves the use of resources, it's much cheaper. You don't have readmissions etcetera. So I would like to know why we're not using those resources effectively to improve patient care.
Thank you. I forewarn, as a member of Leake Town Council and Staffordshire Mawlands District Council, aren't qualified to answer that question. Whether there are any councillors that are qualified to answer that question, I honestly don't know. And I think the answer from the shape of the head is no. There aren't councillors who can answer questions, I'm afraid. Much as it would be nice to give you some sort of answer. There's no good, people just saying things without the expertise to back them up, you know. So I appreciate your statement and what you said.
I can't clearly answer the question directly, but would you? Obviously I can't answer the question directly because clearly I'm applying to the CCG at one of their meetings or through the consultation process. But clearly you've got a view that is consistent with the vast majority of the people in here and it is one that needs addressing or asking the CCG so we get a response. But one thing that I've, through this process and through the Save the Hospital campaign, I'd encourage people not to be confused at this point because the hospital isn't closed at this point, there are still a lot of services that are provided through the hospital. But people are contacting me to say the hospital's closed, whether we go for this or for that. So they aren't actually using the hospital, so people aren't using services that are available now to the level that they could be. So just let's remind people it's still open for our care and we should be encouraged to use it because the more people that use it in the intervening period, that would be greater support to the organisation, to the CCG as well.
I think what my point is though, that you can't use those services without being referred to services. If hospitals aren't referred, you can't just turn up and see physiotherapies.
If I could just comment on that, I was referred to the physiotherapist from my GP. So it's a question what you're asking of your GPs, I suppose, to say next time. Sorry, can I just say, I asked at the start of the meeting for those who wanted to speak. So I'm going to take those people first if you don't mind. Alan, do you want to make a...
Sorry, just for that gentleman to speak. So the lady at the back who wanted to speak is a qualified nurse who's worked at the hospital and she might be able to answer some of the questions that...
Yeah, I'll speak!
Yeah, yeah, okay, I've no problem with that. What I'm saying is that I asked who wanted to speak and I'm going to take those people who indicated they wanted to speak first.
Well, I'll read and I'm going to stand up because I'm used to addressing people but not sitting down. Now, I'm coming from a different reality. My position is I lived in Leake all my life, I'm in and out of the country a lot, but I was drawn to an issue a few weeks ago, which I won't go into now because we're here talking about, for me, is a very, very passionate topic. Now, I don't know how many of you are aware of this, but my parents, I can always remember them telling me that the people of Leake for years donated money and subscribed for a hospital. And what happened? It disappeared into a black hole somewhere in the patries. Now, I'm saying that because there's a passion from the people in Leake that want a hospital with beds. So why am I here tonight? Because I'm in and out of the country, but I saw that the beds have been taken out and I thought, this is extraordinary, absolutely extraordinary. So I've got quite a number of questions I want to ask. You've already said the MP isn't here. That is a total disgrace. It's a total disgrace that Civil Ralph is not here. But not surprising because she won't give me an appointment and we're talking where the good councillor, love it isn't he, raised a question about the diabolical toilets and the bus station. They're still the same. So what does that say from my perspective? I look here tonight and I see a lot of heads that are dropped and I look at a lot of people who were sitting in seats and they don't have any power. But what they do have, they've got a consensus of votes from the majority of people to represent their views. And as I sit here now, there isn't a passion for a fight. And when I heard that somebody in dark suits said, "We're taking the beds away", wait a minute, this is a hospital that services, and I found it surprising but obviously true, 95,000 people in its area. Now then, let me tell you a few truths that you probably don't understand. I've got five kids. I've used that hospital a few times. Why a few times? I'll tell you why. I'm not alone because when you've gone up to that hospital, and I'm not saying there aren't good nurses there and anything else, what you'll get, an answer, as you get from your doctor, "Go down A and E". I've been up to that hospital, "Go down A and E", and I thought, well, what have I come for? Treatment should be here. How many more people go to Macclesfield, go to the A and E because they don't go up the road? Because the services that should be provided, which that gentleman's talking about and we all agree to. There is nobody in Leake who says we don't want beds and yet tonight we should be preparing battle plans. Well, I've got one or two ideas I'll come to in a minute. I'd like first of all, who owns the property of the hospital? Is it town? Is it town? They actually own that? Okay. All right, well, I'll propose something in a bit that can raise money, because we know we're on a sinking ship where the country is. I've got no political allegiance, but it's a cost-cutting exercise. It's not about, is it good for the people? That doesn't come into it. But one of the questions I'd like to ask, when that phone call came, that that was happening, who addressed that? Did they go and see these people personally? Did they pull forward a case that this is not going to happen? Because it seems to me, I come in here, as I say, I'm not in the country all the time, but it seems as though you've all rolled over. And I can say, by those that are sitting here, I'm afraid you don't have any power, because anyone who can still sit as a town councillor and accept the terrible public toilets, and it's still the same, what does he say about this town? We are here tonight, and as I see it, you've got to amalgamate, you've got to put the energy of people in this Leake, a Leake who want this to be stayed as it is, and include more. So you've got to unite, and the other councillor, the Staffordshire, whatever it is, there's got to be a combination of coming together, because you don't find a battle split apart. So what am I saying? I feel there's a number of things we can do. I wish I could, I'm good at negotiating, make no mistake. I'll say eyeball with eyeball. And I've talked to people, I've talked to Tesco a few years ago, eyeball with the C E O, I could have saved them billions. You talk to the people direct, you don't talk to them by phone, letter, or anything. You go and you express, but when you go and you answer, we're closing it, you sit down and you go with a proposal, and we can do something about that, and you've got to listen to us. So what am I suggesting? Well, I look at this, we know there's no money for anything, but it's terribly wrong they're going to take it out on Leake. But as I see it, you've got to put up a fight, a better fight, and I mean together. You should have a committee, not just of councillors, sitting there. I'm afraid whatever power you've got, it's zilch, because if you can't get a decent toilet in Leake, what can you do? So I mean saying, you've got to unite. There's a lot of clever people in Leake, and the passion of the people in Leake, there isn't one, there isn't one who's going to say, close it. So what are we going to propose? This is an idea that may not be acceptable, but I tell you what, if I was sitting with someone, I would not accept, we're closing it. I did a deal detail tonight, I think it's pamphlets, the first time I saw her, I had to look at the paper to recognise it, and I said, well, what's the cost? What's the cost of a bed? And she said, I think, and I'm not holding it to anything, because I don't think none of us know the facts about anything, she said about two thousand pounds a bed. Well, anyone who's been in business knows about creative accountancy, two thousand pounds a bed, I could stay at one of the best hotels in London for that. That's a joke. So what am I talking about? I don't want to just criticise, we're going to come up with ideas, because you don't win battles like that. And I think, if the worst comes to the worst, but first, let's get it right, you've got to unite, you can't just sit on your own as a town councillor and do this and that. You've got to have someone who can stand up, and you've got to have a battle plan, a plan that's feasible, acceptable, and it can be done. You've got the people of Leake behind you, there's no question about that. If you're going into battle, if you've got your troops with you, and you believe you can win. So how I'm talking tonight, this is one idea, let me just quote this, this is Robert Kennedy, and I have his philosophy. He said, and he said it many times, people look at the things the way they are, and they ask, why? He says, I have dreams that have never been seen before, and I say, why not? That's my thinking. And what I'm going to suggest tonight, because it's not the end of the game, it's the beginning. For the first time, I've, the first time I've been in this place, it's a beautiful facility that sits behind, it just looks as though it could accommodate the European trials, but in the best way. You've got a beautiful facility, but let's get it right, Leake's a beautiful place, it's deserved better, and it's not had it. That's my opinion, through the years, we could have done so much better. I never cast my hat into the ring in politics, because if I do, I'd like to cast it for number ten, but not align to the present policy to God. So let me get to the point, because I know times go, but we're limited, we should not be watching the watch or the clock. This is important. If we don't get an act together to face these men in black suits, we're going to lose it. But I tell you what, there's a voice in Leake that are passionate, what I'm talking of, that says we're not meant to lose it. Now, this is an idea I had, when I saw those figures of ninety-five thousand, et cetera, thirty-seven beds. We, the people of Leake, could run that facility at those thirty-seven beds. What do I mean by that? Let's face it, we are all going to grow to an age, or we've got parents now, and they're like, people shipped into the North Stas, the families are all over the country, where did he go? They can't bring them out, that's called bed blocking. In Leake, we've had a facility for thirty-seven beds, and someone's had the atrocious fault to close it. That's got to be there. What they need before we're done is a facility that should be increased, not deceased. So what I'm suggesting, let's look into another window of thought. If, and I know it's not going to be agreeable, but you've got to look out of the box, we're living in times, you've got to get change, big changes, but if you're all trying to talk off the same aim sheet, you can do something. This is one of my ideas, how to run the bed part, which is by the people of Leake. I know there's a lot of good souls in Leake who would volunteer part of their time, you know, when an old person's in bed, it's not a doctor, it doesn't have to be a nurse, and it doesn't have to be a bottle or a tablet, it can be someone who's caring and can give a look. Now then, if you've got thirty-seven people that are in those beds, I'm damn sure we've got enough volunteers who could be angels to put themselves forward and have a platoon set, and so we sort of warm time, that we, as a unit, we can save money. When we say two thousand a night coffee, we switch the lights on, we can even provide between us, this town, the food, the cooking, the cleaning, just one minute. And that's just one idea.
Alan, we're going up to one, twelve minutes.
All right, well, I'm on another three minutes, because this is important, what I'm saying now.
Okay.
And I understand, and we should not, we should not be looking at the watch, and people have got a opinion.
That is my job.
All right, well, then, you've got to change the rules, because if you live by the rules today, you don't get anywhere. So I'm going to say what I want to say, just in a few minutes.
I'm going to do it.
Oh, really? Okay, but I don't live in a Marxist society. Listen, we've got ninety-five thousand people, think about this, we pay council rates, what if we introduce, and have the power to do so, and you can do it, if you've got the force and the voice behind you, that each and every person pays one pound a week? If I've got four or five kids living in my home, I pay for each of those children, one pound a week. That would give ninety-five a week, add that as a subscription, that gives ninety-five thousand pounds a week. With the voluntary people that could help on the loving and caring side of the hospital, that's got to be a plus. If I was talking to them men in black suits, I've got something to negotiate with, not to just say, well, we're not accepting. We can talk, we can talk about something, I understand where they're coming from, you know, they've got decisions from above. So I'll finish it that, but just think about it, you're all sitting there, and at the moment, you're all powerless, and I can say that because we've got the disgrace of the stills there, and we've got the civil rattles who don't want to even see me, and the MP who won't even see me, who's thirty feet from that disgraceful toilet. That's where we are, in a bad place. But from every bad place, you can rise with your spirit and enterprise, and we've got a lot of people in this Leake, in Leake, they do a lot, okay?
Appreciate your passion, I really do.
But I think that sometimes you've got to speak the truth, I'm the author.
Thank you very much. Pound, did you indicate you want to come back there?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to put my nursing hat on for a minute, and actually explain to the gentleman that the beds that were at the Malins Hospital weren't the sort of beds that you could fetch volunteers in to help with.
Why? Why?
Because they were rehabilitation beds, they were people who were being transferred further there for what was called intermediate care or rehabilitation care. So they need specialised nurses, they need trained nurses, they need physiotherapy, they need occupational therapy in order to make sure that they get back to their full potential before they were discharged home. What you're describing, so, is a care home, and that's not a hospital.
Well, I often disagree with that, I agree with what you say, the facilities you're offering, but hopefully, you can add.
I'm going to say, Alan, this part of the meeting is not a debating thing, it's for members to put a point, and then councillors, whether they can, answer the questions or answer the points. And there's more and more people now putting their hands on, so they have to be careful on it. Councillor Allen. That was an impassioned speech from the gentleman, and I can sympathise with his view in many ways. You know, if you look at the council, this is town council, normally we meet in a little office round the corner, we don't come in here all the time, this is a district council facility. But I'd ask these questions, you know, the hospital and its services are needed by the people of Leake and the Malins, that's undoubtedly the truth. Why, ask yourself, Alan, why is there such great resistance by the authorities to having this meeting in the first place? Why were there so many refusals from these key people who could have answered some of those questions to attend the meeting? Why would the agenda change? That's a small item, but we've got round that. And why is the permission to do a webcast of this meeting to the people of Leake and to post charity, why has that been denied? Ask yourself those questions. Right, of those five specially invited guests, all of whom have not attended, three are Conservative councillors, including the leader of SMDC. One is our current MP, and the other is a highly paid Staffordshire County Council officer on a hundred and thirty thousand pounds a year plus.
Disgrace, I agree.
Food for thought, here's some more, there are sixteen councillors that represent Leake on both town and district, because some people wear two hats. Why are there so few Conservative councillors in the same Leake hospital group? Why hasn't, why haven't the past Mayor of Leake, councillor Johnson, SMDC councillor and former cabinet member, the past chairman of SMDC, Ben Emery, and the current mayor, Roy Tomkinson, why haven't they stepped forward and helped these two councillors in that campaign? Why haven't they used their high-profile positions?
Don't stop, that's the way I was just, you're just politicising this.
I'm not, I'm not. I'm not telling you. An eighty-year-old resident said to me, if the council won't fight for its own hospital, what is the use of the council? And she's right. I just remind ourselves, most people in the Staffordshire Malins pay council tax. The district councillors alone have paid one million pounds in allowances and expenses over the four-year term that they serve. Are we getting value for money?
No.
No.
Okay, I don't think that was a particularly good answer for your comments, Alan. I don't know whether anyone else wants to address Alan's comments.
Yes, I do.
Councillors? No? Okay.
I'm sorry, dear.
But this isn't, this isn't an open meeting, this is a council meeting, which will be conducted in that manner, and we'll try and give everybody a fair shout. The gentleman here is the next speaker, will you give us your name, please, sir?
Andrew Kent. Well, I'd like to, someone only mentioned, was it the IT who made the decision, mentioned that the idea, well, closing the beds even temporarily was really not about care, it's about saving money. So we can only assume on that, the decisions that the CCG are making are business decisions, if they're not budgets, I understand that. Well, if these are business decisions, and whether or not their hospital or the services stay at Leake will also be a business decision, because it's based on having budgets. If it's a business decision, business decisions have impacts. How many impact assessments have been carried out by the CCG into the impact this will have on the local economy and also the people, but also on other services? Because if you take a massive amount of money out and also take a hospital out of this setting, that will have a huge impact on other services. Now, you carry out an impact assessment under some form of due diligence, you have to do that. Now, the reason why I do the due diligence, when you make the claim that you're going to save four or five million pounds over whatever artificial timescale you dream up, you have to offset against the way you're saving the money, that you also, basically, the resources you're taking or extra expenditure occurring onto other services. So has an impact assessment been done to see what effect would be and what cost will be incurred by other services due to this decision? If not, why not? And also, has it been published? And if not, why not? Because if they're going to go through a formal consultation process, we have a right to know what the result of shooting the hospital will be. And so far, we don't know. Why? Has anyone asked this question? Because it's a basic question, business question. Have you carried out due diligence? Where's the impact assessment? Has it been published? Can anyone tell me? Yeah?
Okay. The councillor.
This document, oh, sorry, this document is the Sustainability and Transformation Plan for Staffordshire and Stoke-on-Trent. It has identified that by 2021, there will be a deficit of five hundred and forty-two million pounds if nothing is done to prevent what they would regard as overspending, which we would regard as money required to service the needs of local people. So the five-year plan is all about taking that money out of the system. Now, they have issued a document which talks about figures, but it doesn't talk very much about care, it doesn't talk about the impact it will have on care, because they regard, they've been trying to pull the wool over our eyes by suggesting that closing our hospital beds will actually improve local services, whereas the independent reconfiguration panel that Chris Taylor referred to, and I'll direct quote here, it said, the closure of community beds to date is associated with cost-cutting rather than the implementation of better services with improved outcomes for patients. That was the government's own independent reconfiguration panel, the expert panel that advises government on the impact of service changes. So that indicates to you and to me that whatever the local NHS bosses have come up with is not agreed to by the independent reconfiguration panel. So yes, they've done all sorts of reports, there's this eight-page document here, but I'm sure it doesn't give us the answers we're looking for.
Any of the councillors want to come back on the gentleman's questions? You will appreciate, of course, that we are not the CCG, and the fact that most of us have attended the meetings and the consultations and the public meetings at CCG have L in the area, we none of us party to necessarily the details that they aren't sharing with us, which is not doubtful.
Could I just say, the question I asked was, how have they actually done an impact assessment to see what cost will be incurred by other services? And I haven't answered that question. Have you asked the question? Do you have the understanding basis of the impact assessments and anything like that at all? Because if you did, you would ask these questions, and I don't think you have.
Well, I've got to say, that there's been an awful lot of questions asked over the course of the period that we've had, the various consultations, and those were public meetings, those were meetings that, I was just thinking, my girlfriend mentioned, those were meetings that... were public meetings that you were able to go to and any other members were able to go to. And it would obviously be beneficial if people with varying views did ask these questions and bring things. I mean, from my perspective, I wouldn't trust the CCG any further than this, don't they? You know, they tell you what you, they want you to do, and that's it. And we all agree on that, I'm sure. So regardless of understanding what you're saying, and I do understand what you're saying, getting that sort of information out of them in detail is never easy. I've got probably three more hands up. What am I going to say?
So are you telling me that there's no one on the council, basically, that can't answer?
But we're not members of the CCG. We don't know what the CCG...
You don't have to go there. This is, someone in this should have this, but I'll ask that. Sorry, I would have thought, I would have hoped someone on the council, having enough economic competence, at least in business, to ask this basic question. If they're going to give you a figure, say, we're going to save this money, say, yeah, well...
What's he going to cost us to save?
Yeah, what's the cost of this? Because quite often, the costs appear on the cities, you can add where he figured it gave me, but we should be asking that question, because that's what they're playing.
Well, the problem is, those sort of questions are not the sort of questions that we ever get straight answers to, are they? You know, I'm not, I'm not trying to force this, I mean...
The whole point is, if you haven't asked them, don't make excuses if we haven't got the straight answer, haven't asked the question.
Right, just, I, I've got several more hands up now, so... I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Now, the answer to your question is, I personally haven't asked that question. I haven't asked that question. I always ask that question, no pants ask that question.
Andy, I've asked that question on many occasions, not directly about the whole health economy, but the impact of closing beds, for instance, but also the impact of not funding social care appropriately. Because the deficit in social care in 2021 will also be around £250 million, and the very fact that that's not being properly funded by government and by the county council means that you have numerous people in base, in acute hospitals, and for that matter, in community hospitals, who could leave those hospitals if they had a public care package. But in Leake and in the Morlands, you can't recruit community carers for love nor money. And that is the underlying problem with a plan which seems to suggest that we have enough GPs, we have enough carers, we have enough nurses, we have enough health professionals. We do not within the NHS, within England and Ireland.
That is the answer. You know, you ask the questions, you don't get the answers. This is the problem. And we've all asked questions and we haven't got answers to, and so it's, it's not that we're trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes, it's not that we haven't done things, you know. Right, let me bring some more people in. There's a young lady up there with a striped top on who's actually waving her arm up. Listen, you'll have to stand up, you'll have to shout.
I'm sorry to bother you. On the back of the gentleman, the gentleman, I think, and the rest of us would like to know, has the council done an impact assessment? Individually, collectively, anything else? On the back of this gentleman, I'd like him to know that if you look at your council tax bill, you already contribute to the care, the local elderly care. You've been doing it for years, so where's that money going? Thanks very much.
Yeah, okay. Well, let me explain that this is probably not the best forum for this debate. Leake Town Council just about forged to put the Christmas lights on in December. That is our budget. We don't have tens of thousands, millions of pounds to conduct the sort of surveys that you're talking about. We don't have either the spending power, we don't have the authority to do anything like this. This is not the forum for it. We look after simple things, we're small. Effectively, we're a parish council, like a village parish council. That is the role of Leake Town Council. And I appreciate that not everybody realises the role of councils, but we are quite small, and I agree with what you're saying, I never paid the things in council tax.
You're all business people. You must know what the local impact is going to be. Surely, one of you must have an idea what the local impact is going to be. All far figured.
If, if they were paying me the sort of figure that they pay Marcus Warnes, then probably I could afford to tell you that, but I don't, you know. I'm sorry. Lady up there. Lesley.
Lesley Robson.
Yes, sorry, Lesley.
That's all right. I have put in a Freedom of Information request to the CCG to find out some information so that when we are consulted later on this year, I might be able to give an informed decision on the consultation, rather than randomly tick boxes that I don't understand. So the freedom of information asked, I said, was, how much does it cost to keep a patient in a bed at the hospital for two weeks, say, R and R? Where they've got all the resources that they need for rehabilitation in the one building? No one has to travel anywhere. Ten of them are going to be discharged at once. Ten of them get discharged and they're sent home. So they're all over the place. So the people in the hospital who provide the services have got to drive out to all these different people to do the same services that they do. And I'll ask for the cost of one versus the cost of the other, otherwise I can't make a decision. But more importantly, neither can the CCG unless they've got those figures. And I have to say, it's more than undefinitive. I've had no answer to it at all. And that just leads me to think that not only do these people not know how much things cost, the CCG don't either. And if I could just take a one tiny point, and it's a little tiny, tiny, tiny criticism, I think it was councillor Podmore who said, "We don't have any power, we don't have any, we can't do anything." You've just said, "You're as poor as church mice and you can't do anything." You can. We put you there, we put you there. You've got all of us. It's not just you, it's the rest of us. And so if you put in an FOI, you'll get an answer. I won't, but you will, because we put you there. And what we asked at the beginning was, not what have you done individually, but what have you done together as a town council on our behalf to ask for the information that I'm asking for, so that we can make a decision and make a submission to that consultation that's going to take place in the autumn? We want you to do it on our behalf. And I know this gentleman, we kept mentioning the toilets, but he's got a point. I won't go there, I'd go in the pub instead. But you've got to do things on our behalf. You're not that poor, you can get your money. We'll make sure you get the money if you will do it. If you won't do it, can you step down and let somebody else do it?
Very well.
Just, just point of clarification, I did say, as a local authority town council hasn't really got any power. What, what, I did not say we can't do anything. What I said was, we need to be able to influence the process and the outcomes, and that's is what we're looking to do. What we have, you know, I answered the question at the beginning, what the councillors have done, so I can't speak for them. What I did audit late, you know, what I think the town council done, district council done, and I've done as an individual, we'll continue to do that. I mean, one of your questions just around cost, just tried to be helpful, because that has been asked before, and there was a mythbust provided by the CCG, and in there they talked about the costs, and Alan asked about the cost of the bed as well. So in that bit of response, it said each community hospital bed costs £2,100 each week. And average residential home bed costs around £600 a week, and nursing home bed, £700 per week. With intensive therapy support, it can be up to £1,000 per week. So as you can see, you can people in very expensive community hospital beds, when they do not need to be in there, it's not clinically or financially sustainable. Not my position, that's what the CCG have said, just in terms of mythbusters. So on a high level, it looks like, that's £2,100 for a bed in the hospital, and a thousand, up to a thousand pounds out in the community. One of the questions that we've asked first, I think a number of people have asked before, and I know I've asked it before, is, I mean, Alan talks about, you know, putting figures together and creating accountants, how did it get to the figure, £2,100? And that part of the question has never been answered.
I think they don't take into consideration, that gentleman was talking about the impact. Well, these people have got to drive out, how sustainable is all of that? People driving around the countryside, there being scattered all over, like, we're not in a city centre, this is a rural area.
Councillor.
I think in relation to this £2,100 a week for a bed at Leake Morlands Hospital, we've got to remember that we've paid, a lot of that will go on the management structure. The management structure of the NHS, as far as I can see, is so top-heavy that it is ridiculous. And of course, we've always got to remember that Marcus Warnes has got to take part of his £195,000 a year salary out of that £2,100 a week. It's obscene, it's absolutely obscene. But where we can't pull corners, in my opinion, is on the actual care given at Leake Morlands Hospital.
Councillor White.
The reason I asked for this meeting, and was supported by my colleagues here on my left and with Keith here behind me, is because we get conflicting stories in our local newspaper. They're ripping our hospital apart. £5.1 million spent on a tired old building, and most recently, reassurance over the future of the hospital. This is the information that people are being fed. Councillor Ralph, who couldn't make it tonight, I'll quote her, "As leader of the district council, I have been involved in early conversations with the clinical commissioning group about proposals, and I can say, I have been very encouraged by their ambitions, which I think, which I believe will be about transformation and changes, and ultimately, better changes and care for the people of the Morlands. I feel reassured that the provision of health services is secure and will not be withdrawn in Leake." And earlier, Chris gave us a list of 10 services that were just about to be withdrawn in Leake. And our MP, Karen Bradley, talks here about a meeting with Sybil Ralph, and with Marcus Warnes, and Alan White, another guy that couldn't make it tonight, about improving facilities at Leake Morlands in both health and care. And I'll quote, I'll quote our MP, she says, "She has made it clear about the need for Leake to have the right services under one roof." That's what she says. That's what we all want, surely. But it isn't happening, is it?
Why aren't they here?
Um, excuse me, please. Can I say something? Hello? Let's enjoy my first. No, yes. Yes, so my name is Erica.
Can you stand up and shout?
My name's Erica, councillor Wales, I work with Karen, I've got special responsibility for health. Um, yes, I'm sorry she couldn't come to the meeting, she's got a longstanding engagement. But I am here, and I can assure everybody that she's doing everything she can to keep the hospital open and to enhance services. She really is. It's a unique issue. There wouldn't be one person, I don't think, in Staffordshire or Lanark, who would say they don't want to retain the services. So I just want to reassure you that, you know, it seems as if councillor Wales just wants to bring up the negative impact of everything. We're working towards what is going to hopefully be an improved service, and we won't stop working towards that, I can assure you. Thank you.
I'm a simple... Yeah, yeah, I'm a simple... I think that we have a major issue here at trust. The chair of this meeting has said he doesn't trust the clinical commissioning group. Does anybody trust the clinical commissioning group? Nobody does. Has anybody been given any meaningful figures? The figures quoted by the CCG for care in the hospital, in home and in a care home are so patently obviously rubbish, any reasonably competent person with a little calculator could prove that. But the problem, a problem is also, is the perception of most people in this town, I suggest, is that councillor Ralph and our MP, who are the ones who've been talking to the CCG, are in the CCG's pocket. And they are carrying out the wishes of the CCG, not the wishes of the electorate of this area and town. And it's a disgrace. While we're on the subject of trust and care, to pick up on a subject that the council won't vote on, I'm going to get upset. You know what I'm going to say, don't you? Both my mother-in-law and father-in-law suffered from dementia at the end of their lives. My father-in-law was treated in the Morlands Hospital. The care he received was absolutely fantastic. You could not do that for better. My mother-in-law was treated in Stoke. It was an absolute shambles. The people of this town deserve better than what is being suggested by the CCG. And what we need is trust in our local elected representatives to carry out the wishes of the people of this town. I know it's difficult, I know that it brings no good sense, it's not a political fight, it is a political fight. It's about money. We all know there isn't enough money. Then shall the loudest get the best deal? First off, best dress, call it what you like. We have got to fight. And while there is, you know, we get in the Leake Post, councillor Ralph, one month, it will go up to the mountain. No figures quoted, no financial justification, it's all going up there. The week after, oh, it's all going to be all right, we don't need to worry about anything. Well, we are worried. Everybody's worried, and they've got reason to be worried. And, you know, there are people who need to stand up to this, and there are people who are on the council. Whether it be the town council or the district council, of whatever political persuasion, they have to stand up and be candid, not in the way that councillor Ralph seems to be acting at the moment, because nobody's going to be trusting her as far as this is concerned. She's the one who's going to see the CCG and coming back with all the stories, along with the MPs. What are we supposed to be doing? Shaun Stakins.
Yeah, back in 2012, there was the Health and Care Act. That gave us clinical commissioning groups. We lost that primary care trust, because it was very much based on trying to create good community local care. We were told by the Conservative government that clinical commissioning groups, who are responsible for buying health services, they're the ones who pay for services in hospital beds, would be clinically led, that they'd be led by doctors. But the reality, from what this gentleman's just said, is they're not led clinically at all, they're led by money. Because as the Leake Post in Times has reported quite recently, both of our local clinical commissioning groups are running a huge deficit, something like £7 million. And so therefore, far from decisions being made on the grounds of clinical need, on what services local people want and have an expectation to receive, actually, clinical commissioning groups are run by the need to cut services, and that is why we are in the process of losing us pretty much.
Councillor, if you want to comment.
Thank you, Brian, for allowing me to speak, because it affects my award just the same that it's done through. I've listened very intently to what everybody's been saying, and I think there should be a big thanks that goes out to Nick Sheldon, who stood for the MP for Leake Save the Hospital, Stephen Wales, Charlotte Atkins, and the chairman of the...
Thank you, Brian, for allowing me to speak, because it affects my award just the same that it's done through. I've listened very intently to what everybody's been saying, and I think there should be a big thanks that goes out to Nick Sheldon, who stood for the MP for the Slayton Hospital, Stephen Wales, Charlotte Tackins and the chairman of this group, Pam Rodd. They've done some magnificent work. The other thing I would like to say is, it's very interesting what everybody's said and very important what we've said. Must also remember that Marcus Warnes is not a clinician. He's no medical knowledge at all. He's a henchman. And I would like to know what the Conservative town council, ruling town council, district council, county council and government, who are sending the directive to the CCG to do this work, their policies are being fed down and they're having to do this work, trying to close it, which they won't. So who is going to feed all this information back to the CCG, who couldn't be bothered to turn up tonight? And I respect what the lady said on Karen's behalf, but she should be here. This is her constituency. This is one of the most important issues that she'll probably have to face. And she should be here, fighting alongside people who put her there, as should the district council, the county council, who the top county councils get £29,000 a year. So the town councillors, everybody should be together. Yes, you have got the power because you're all of the same political stance. So can you please answer, you're on the chair or somewhere, who is going to take all this information back and get the answers, and when you do get the answers, what are you going to do with them?
Right, okay, that was a, that was a funny, big bag load of questions I was wondering. Um, I think there will obviously go, um, a report from this meeting back to the MP. That's the reason that Erica's sitting in the public gallery. Um, and let me assure you, I've worked on a lot of things with Erica. Erica is very, very efficient. Um, so there will go a full report back to the MP. I think that there's a little bit of disservice here, because to a great extent, the councils have been working together over the last eighteen months. I know that, um, it doesn't necessarily seem like that, but there's a number of us on the town council and already on the district council. Um, we, we've all had this debate with various guest speakers, including Marcus Warnes on numerous occasions. We've all written letters. We've all condemned the CCG. So, I mean, I recognise that I am not part of the same Morlands Hospital group. They're a very strong group. Whether they would be real or not, I don't know. But they're doing a very, very good job, and I think everybody appreciates that. There's no doubt about it. Um, what more we can do that we haven't done, we will probably try to pull together from this evening's meeting and the suggestions that people have made, and formulate yet another piece of correspondence to the relative people. I mean, there's got to be an outcome from this meeting.
Can you just let me come back? If you do all that, the clock is ticking, and by the time you've done that, the door will be locked.
The last hour we gave, it did two less than twenty-four hours.
And Linda raises some personal points. We clearly can't speak for authorities, but, I mean, it's sad to begin with, what we've done as individuals and what we've done collectively. I mean, you know, as a councillor, you know, it's interesting to see whether there is a disconnect. I think so from the beginning. Everyone's of the same mind and of the same opinion. So there's no real differential position between any of the groups here. Uh, I, I get that there's uncertainty, and I get it's worrying times. It's for all of us. Am I part of the work at the hospital? We give the hospital to our children. It's the fault of ourselves. We want to see it to continue there. It is worrying times, but in terms of interactions, you know, you take it to an awful, on a personal level, I've had conversations of legal authority. I believe she's genuine in every term. And I know you don't necessarily trust her or the MP, but all I can say is, if you believe the CCG's ambition is to close the hospital, then it'd be very, very public statement from our MP, Karen Bradley, that actually the hospital wasn't going to close. And if you've heard the statements councillor Wales has mentioned that have been in the paper of late, councillor Rouse few weeks ago, that the hospital, you know, shouldn't be closed, but we should be retaining services and enhancing services. And at the beginning of this meeting today, councillor Brian Johnson mentioned, it weren't fair, that new services are going into the Leamorelands Hospital as of this month with GP extra labour care. So undoubtedly, it is worrying. Undoubtedly, it is uncertain time. Undoubtedly, we need to fight this, as Alan says, with, with passion. And we need to fight it together with a united front, because that's the only way we can get the best possible outcome. But, you know, we should hope we have the same issue here. And if we've got behind the leader of SMDC, who has got a position of responsibility and influence, if we've got behind the MP, who's clearly got position of responsibility and influence with the same message, that would give them more power and support with their engagement, with the CCG who've engaged. And I know Karen Bradley has met with the Seco State as the leader of SMDC. So what we should be doing is, rather than creating them, saying, "As they're in the pocket of the CCG", when quite clearly they're not, because of their fellow friends, the constituents, and actually their public statements, are contrary to what you want, you believe the CCG are looking to achieve. So they're not, they're not in case. And, you know, of course, I wasn't calling out, I don't have to do that with it, because you could do something against what my view would be or what my wishes would be. But I just don't, we can all come together and move this forward. I'm delighted this means, this evening. But to this point, I've not really seen, I did, you hadn't said a couple of things around, you know, proposal. You know, that's, that's sensible and telling things. But what's the outcome? What are we going to do moving forward? What are we going to do differently? How are we going to get behind councillor Rouse or Karen Bradley to get the outcome of whatever you want? Because at the moment, there's very little news. We've got a question from the chap here around impact assessments, about proposals or a freedom of information request. Well, if you think councillors have got that great degree of input, Sam, if you want to finish me with a question you want to ask the CCG, I'll fly into our awards volume, and then we can make the outcome of that public. And if you want to give me your details, you can contact me. I'll sit past about that, and that's it. It hasn't been absolutely, but I don't trust you to do it.
Well, in terms of more final points, we can make the minutes available to the CCG. We should mention whether. Councillor Wood.
Thank you, Chair. I want to disagree with you somewhat on what you were saying a few minutes ago. Um, I don't think that either the town council or the district council has put much emphasis on discussing or trying to, to stop what's happening to the Morlands Hospital. For instance, I think on only one occasion, as the Morlands Hospital problem has been on the town council agenda, uh, and going to the SMDC health scrutiny panel, in the last eighteen months, and I say eighteen months because that's when I see the problem starting, and that's when we started the same Leamorelands Hospital group. In the last eighteen months, the district council's health scrutiny panel has met on four occasions. Four occasions in eighteen months. And I don't, I can't remember how many times the hospital problem was on the agenda. Probably once. Um, and I find that, I don't find that as proactive in any shape or form. But Chair, have we now finished the patient participation?
It, it, it does seem as though the public are still wishing to participate. But I'll, let's try and bring that bit. A lady over here, would you like to speak?
Just very quickly, it's funny you ask. Is it possible to have a resolution coming from this meeting? Because otherwise, all these wonderful comments and all our passion enthusiasm is going to be lost. Whoever acts the minutes of, it's not going to reflect it. We need a proper resolution coming from the government. And we need to make sure that's really followed up.
Uh, sorry, Pam, did you want to come back?
Yes, Chair, um.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Go on, go on. Next.
As soon as the patient participation part of the meeting is finished, I've got a statement I'm going to send out on behalf of the Slayton Hospital Action Group.
Okay, your time has gone now. Yes, Councillor.
Chair, Mike Jones.
Can you use the mic further?
Yeah, sure. Uh, Mike Jones, um, citizen. I've worked at the council for eighteen years, working alongside a lot of councillors here. And one thing that's struck me is why aren't you tapping to the officers? You've got Harry Page, chief exec for the staff of the Morlands. You know, you've got influence as councillors, but why haven't you got the working party of senior officers doing whatever they can to sort this mess out? Work with the city council, work with Derbyshire County Council, work with the neighbouring councils. We're up, it's, I mean, I was at the, I was at the meeting where there was a vote of no confidence in the council. I was amazed because I saw all the councillors saying a vote of no confidence, and the councillor at the end there was, uh, was one of the key speakers. It was a great, I was up there and saw it happen. But nothing's happened since then. You did a vote of no confidence. The, the council officers now are in charge of all the county. It didn't make any difference. It's now time to get Sam Baker to put his clout and his influence and get officers working on this to protect our, our services, I think. I'd like to put that as a suggestion. You propose that as a town council and pass up to district council.
I'd like to say, I think we have got to work really hard on this, because over the years, we've lost the Cottage Hospital, we lost St Edmund's Hospital, where I did my training. We've lost so much, and it's, it's not right. We've got to do something and work on it, because we've lost so much stuff and people need it. And why, why repay all this tax and insurance all these years as you get older? Because I'm older as well. Maybe twenty-one, but. So it's just a thought. We have got to work on this, and something's got to be done, and you're quite right.
I would be entirely, because even those young folks do need the hospital. I've, I've used the hospital, um, three times this year, and, and obviously, we're all getting older. I look around and see all my friends who were boys not many years ago, and they're not such young boys now. So we are, you know, we're all in the same boat. This is the point. And I do appreciate that people probably think we haven't done enough, and we probably haven't. Um, and so, um, I'm quite happy, I'm quite happy to help in any way to drive things forward so that we can work, if you like, more coherently. Um, I, I think the same things that have come up tonight that are well worthy of, of looking at and putting into, um, uh, some sort of working group or in conjunction with district council and, and others. Um, I've just had somebody drop a word of papers on, in front of me, which is a proposal motion for tonight. Uh, I think we need a three quarters of an hour adjournment to read it. Um, but, but let's, let's consider now that the public participation was nearly over. So the young lady in the striped top, put her hand up again. Go on, quickly.
Can the local councillors reassure the public that the building and its bond is not for sale as part of the nail on review?
I'm sure none of us can, no. And if anybody says they can, I'm sure they do, aren't they? No, I mean, we, we, we aren't party to that sort of decision, so we, we can't give you that sort of an assurance. I certainly can't, but that, anybody else can. Charlotte Tackins, public, can?
Back before the summer, um, the Sustainability and Transformation Partnership, which is basically local NHS offices along with local council leaders, said that they were going to publicise what the options were, which we were going to be consulted on formally in October. That was going to be public. And then a week or so before it was going to be made public, they decided it was going to be confidential. Everything's been done in absolute secrecy. And you're absolutely right to raise the issue of the nail report. Because clearly, one way of clearing NHS deficits is by selling estates. And if you read the SDP document, which you probably have, you will see in there that there is one strand of a whole process which is rationalising estates, which effectively means, and I can rightly indicate, selling off hospitals or converting them into accommodation, whatever. Uh, and so that is a real concern, and that's something we have to consider, not just for leak, but for the other community hospitals in North Staffordshire.
Right, okay. Now, what I'm going to do is draw the public participation to a conclusion. Right, so I'm sorry if this is causing frustration, but, but you are now excluded. This is back to the council meeting, and it is councillors. Okay. Councillor Wood.
Thank you, Chair. Just for clarity, for the last lady, um, there is a community right to buy on the Morlands Hospital. I stopped, I put in for that, it was two years ago now. So what that means is that if NHS England, who own the property, decide to put it on the market, um, then the community's got six months before they can sell it, so that the community can try and raise the money. So if anybody's got an appetite for that, you can go around with a hat.
And I interrupt you. I wonder if there's any chance that we can get all the money back, that round the thermometer?
Ooh, I don't know anything about a round thermometer. It wouldn't be all the time.
A lot I wasn't new. I can't remember now. I don't know if there's anybody old enough who remembers what I'm talking about. Back at Cottage Hospital for many, many years, there was, yes, Margaret Cuthbert. There was a big thermometer, and we raised money, and every time we went up by a thousand or so, they put our interest rates on it. And somebody's mentioned that it all, who, who mentioned it? Alan? It just, it disappeared, absolutely. So that's the first chunk of money we should be making. Karen, I'm sorry about that.
Well, I, I mean, I tend to think that's probably paying the scarring. I just took out this community right to buy on it, just to be a thorn in the side. There's also, um, the front of the hospital is greatly enlisted. So if the worst were to happen and, uh, the property was sold off, the front of the hospital would have to be kept. Can I read my statement now, please? For the last thirty years since its major refurbishment, the Morlands Hospital has proved invaluable to our Morlands community. When the hospital was reopened in the eighties, it was held as the way forward, a hospital catering for a local community and reducing pressure on the overburdened acute hospital fourteen miles away. Since that time, it's been constantly updated and approved whilst providing numerous services and support across the district. During the last twelve years alone, over five million pounds has been spent on making sure that the hospital is fit for the future. Now the hospital is under threat, and make no mistake about it, councillors, it's our own patch. It's us. We're the town council. The community beds have already gone. The North Staffordshire Clinical Commissioning Group have called the closure of these beds temporary. They can't call them anything else, because they haven't jumped through all the legal hoops they have to do before they can call them permanent. The thing is, the beds have now been closed for almost twelve months. How can they get away with calling them temporary? We've been hearing from lots of people that some outpatient appointments and plevotomy services are no longer available at the Morlands. And on at least one occasion, the minor injury unit has been closed due to lack of staff. This all points to the running down of services usually available here in leak. So let's talk about our constituents, the ones that are the town council. We are here to represent. For almost a year now, some of our residents have been either blocking beds at the acute unit or looked after in private care homes, some of which, Chris was talking about, have had very poor results when inspected by the Care Quality Commission. Some people have been prematurely discharged from the acute hospital, only to be readmitted a short time later. These people should, of course, have had the opportunity to be nursed and cared for in the community beds in the Morlands Hospital. They have been denied the unique care that countless people have taken for granted. They have been denied the unique care that countless people have taken for granted. So far, the leader of the district council has given us three differing versions of her vision for the future. First was a brand-new hospital on the Waitrose site. Second was a new dementia care unit in Health Hub on the Mount. And third, just last week, that the hospital remains on the same site and expands its services. I take little comfort from these visions. I want to see concrete proposals. If the leader has been with the CCG, we want to know the outcome. As a town council, we should have been involved throughout the whole process. The present threat to our health services is too important to be hampered by party politics. We should all be working together. As a town council, we should be at the forefront of the fight to retain our hospital. What did we stand for election for if we didn't have the will to put our town folk first? If all we do as a town council is roll over and let the district council and the CCG rub our bellies, or should I say, rub our noses in it, then we shouldn't be members of the council. I know that we sent a letter to the Secretary of State raising our concerns, but I don't think that's quite cutting. We must now stand up to the mark and show that we are fighting with the public until the bitter end. Thank you, Chair.
When I warned Leake residents back in January two thousand and seventeen that the Leake Morlands Hospital beds weren't closed, I was accused by some conservative councillors locally of scaremongering. I don't think I was. I knew that because the five-year NHS plan for health services in Staffordshire and Stoke-on-Trent, published in December two thousand and sixteen, spelt it out. The plan was to close one hundred and sixty-seven community beds within two years. That plan was drawn up in great secrecy, but with the knowledge of local council leaders and it was clear that Leake's thirty-seven community beds was on their hit list. Since then, Pam and I have attended endless pre-consultation meetings with the Clinical Commissioning Group. That's the, as I said earlier, that pays for the Leake Hospital beds. I think those meetings have been an attempt to wear us down. Probably half the people that originally started going to those meetings no longer attend. But we want to be worn down because our community beds are too important. The mantra we get from the local NHS is home first. They say that it's better for patients to be treated at home rather than in a community hospital where all the necessary rehabilitation services are on hand and focused on the welfare and recovery of their patients. But let's be clear, the closure of our community beds is all about cuts, not creating better services. As I said earlier, after an inquiry following a referral by Stoke-on-Trent City Council to the independent reconfiguration panel, they said the closure of community beds to date is associated with cost-cutting rather than the implementation of better services with improved outcomes for patients. That is a government body saying that, not local politicians, a government body, expert health people advising the government. The local NHS plan exposes the financial challenge they face. By twenty twenty-one, if nothing changes, their deficit will be five hundred and forty-two million pounds. The government requires them to clear that deficit in five years. But nearly two years into that five-year plan, the deficit has gone up, not down. Now, when I asked the chief executive of the Sustainability and Transformation Plan whether the deficit had gone up or down, he couldn't tell me. This was in a health committee at the County Council. I said, "Don't give me all that rubbish, just tell me up or down." And he wouldn't tell me, he couldn't tell me. It took him a month to finally told me, tell me that the deficit had gone up. So cost-cutting is now the heart of everything that they do. NHS offices have now decided that we need just one hundred and thirty-two community beds in North Staffordshire. That's down from over two hundred and sixty. That's community beds, we're not talking about acute hospital beds. If they get away with it, many of these one hundred and thirty-two community beds will be in nursing or care homes because they're cheaper, we've heard the figures just earlier on. But we mustn't let them get away with it because to do so, we put lives at risk, or at least we should for lives. Of all the remaining five community hospitals, Leake Morlands is the furthest from an acute hospital, over fourteen miles. And we have a far more elderly population than elsewhere within North Staffordshire. So the real statement of Leake's thirty-seven beds is absolutely vital. It is not a side issue. And what concerns me about councillor Love's statement, it talks about services, but it doesn't talk explicitly about the beds. The CCG, not content with closing our beds, over the summer tried to bully the County Council Health Committee on which I sit to allow them to rip out still more services out of the hospital. Those services were absolutely vital, but they tried to suggest that it was not a substantial change. And therefore, they wanted to get away with it without any consultation. I wrote to every member of the committee and said to them it would make scrutiny an absolute farce if we allowed that to happen. And I'm glad to say, they agreed with me and agreed that we couldn't let the CCG get away with that. Because they were trying to bully us into a disastrous reduction in services. And this, in my view, demonstrates the absolute contempt in which they hold the community of Leake. And it also proves that this is all about cost-cutting and not, as they say, improving local services. How can moving services from Leake Hospital fourteen miles away to the acute hospital be an improvement in services? At the endless meetings that Pam and I have attended, NHS offices seem obsessed with developing a Northfield village complex on the mountain Leake. That would incorporate something like a dementia centre, extra care housing, possibly a GP surgery, although no GP surgery wants to go up there. But it would be absolutely no substitute for our hospital. It would merely deliver, finally, one of the agreements reached between civil wealth of the Staffordshire Morlands District Council and Matthew Ellis, then of the County Council, ten years ago. That's what they promised, ten years ago, we're still waiting for it. Now, the mount would be a suitable place for a dementia centre because a residential dementia centre would mean that the patients within the centre wouldn't be leaving the site. And given the glorious views that you get from the mount, then it would be a suitable place for a dementia centre. But it is not suitable for any sort of integrated care hub where people would visit for community care, for care that they need in their locality. There is a plan within the NHS plan for ten hubs within North Staffordshire. Obviously, there has to be one in Leake, but it mustn't be on the mount. When Pam and I were arguing with the people within the CCG, they said, "Why are you so against having this centre, you know, at Nipton?" And I said, "Nipton, the address, is the mount." Does that tell you something about where it might be? It might be a bit high up, mightn't it, because it's on the mount? And if you looked at the roads, that might look good from a computer assessment, but if you knew Leake and you knew how difficult it would be to get up there, then you realise that any such hub could not be located on the mount. In any way, we have already got a site, the perfect site. It has its own X-ray room, it has its own minor injuries unit and in recent years it's had over five million pounds spent on it. And that, of course, is Leake Morlands Hospital. But a hub is not enough, we must have the base there too.
That's quite awesome. Okay, so what I'd like to do at this stage in the meeting is make a proposal. And on the sheet of paper which has been put in front of the councillors, it's seven steps to save Leake Morlands Hospital. There's a proposal here on adopting a seven-stage programme and I'll be asking for a named vote of the town council. So I'll go through the seven. One, Leake Town Council to issue a public statement on what it will do to ensure the services at Leake Morlands Hospital are maintained and improved for the long term, including the beds and a full range of services on-site, keeping the public informed of any key developments ongoing through press and media. Two, Leake Town Council to issue a public statement that recognises the value of the Leake Morlands Hospital facilities as a major current public investment and that it highly values its state-of-the-art facilities as they are fit for the future in meeting the immediate and growing needs of our community and that it will therefore fight to ensure the hospital site is central to the future planning of our health services. Three, Leake Town Council should regularly review ongoing developments in the delivery of a sustainability and transformation plan and respond robustly and keep the public informed. Leake Town Council should appoint appropriate town council spokespersons to monitor and lead on health service issues. Arrange attendance along with Staffordshire District Council and County Council delegates to any meetings or briefings with the CCG. Leake Town Council should challenge the CCG that it must act within its legal mandate. This, given the closure of the thirty-seven beds without consultation, its transfer of phlebotomy and physiotherapy to the hospital in Stoke without consultation and its most recent attempt through formal application to Staffordshire County Council Health Scrutiny Select Committee to transfer ten major outpatient services to the UHNM without public consultations. These actions are threatening the viability of our hospital. Six, Leake Town Council should challenge the CCG as it should now be behaving in an open, transparent and honest manner in its engagement with the public, as in its commitment following the severe criticism it received from the independent reconfiguration panel after it closed those thirty-seven beds. And, for instance, we will not accept the outrageous misrepresentation by the CCG that care at Leake Hospital is bed-based, with patients just left in beds. Leake Hospital patients were up and dressed and received a full programme of physiotherapy, speech therapy, occupational and motivational support to reach the fullest recovery. Seven, finally, the evidence shows that the CCG is still repeatedly acting beyond its legal mandate in a way that is not open, honest and genuine in its public engagement and that it has failed to learn the lessons following the severe criticism from the IRP. We recall it was only on the basis of promised improvements in this regard that the IRP did not defer them at that stage to the Secretary of State for Health. In view of the above evidence, Leake Town Council should now formally request that Staffordshire County Council, as their designated health authority, now refer the CCG to the IRP for review. And I'd like a vote, please. I'm going to ask all councillors if they want to comment on the proposal. Councillor Ward.
Can I second that proposal?
Can I have a name first?
Yeah, by all means, yeah, yeah. Does anybody else want to make comment? Councillor Povey?
Thank you, Chair. I too wish to see Leake Morlands Hospital remain open with many facilities on the one side of the hospital. However, I don't think that Leake Town Council is the body that's going to achieve that. We've hinted at how horrible and nasty the CCG are and I would echo that, nothing positive about them. It's a hour to sit here listening to all the speakers. There are somewhere in the order thirty-five parish councils across the Staffordshire Morlands. The total number of the Morlands Hospital serves that are populated is ninety-five thousand. I'm not quite certain how many of those parish councils make up of ninety-five thousand. Each of those parish councils is equally entitled to form its view on what services should be delivered. We're very fortunate to have the facilities housed in our own parish of Leake. Leake Town Council employs one employee who, as far as I know, has no experience whatsoever in healthcare and is made up of twelve volunteer unpaid councillors. I thought the suggestion from the gentleman on the back row was quite good, that there are some capable officers within the district council that could form some sort of working group to focus, you know, campaigns and description. It's not an against of this council and I'm certain that the CCG isn't going to want to negotiate with thirty-five different organisations that is obviously not capable of negotiating with two great counties in the district. I say, I'm all for retention of the hospital, but I think several of the councillors have spoken to me and are bidding up what Leake Town Council can deliver for you and, you know, I'm not here to mislead you. I won't be supporting the second point plan because of that.
Councillor Ward.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Povey, we're not asking you to save the hospital. What we're here to do is to ask that the town council become involved in the fight to save the hospital, that they stand up and be counted. So far, the town council has been noticeable by its silence on the subject. It isn't on a regular agenda, it's the biggest threat to our healthcare for many, many generations. And at the very least, we should be debating this on a regular basis and we should be doing everything within our power to try and move forward and make sure that we get the best possible results that we can.
Yes, some, forty-eight years ago I was born in that hospital, and I will be fully supporting the motion.
Does anybody else wish to comment?
Yeah, all members of the town council can propose arguments for the agenda's meetings. I'd like to ask councillor Ward, how many times has she asked the Chair, the GP, to have the hospital on the agenda? And how many times has it been refused?
Commence, Chair. I've only been back on the town council for, I think I've attended two meetings since I was, and we only have, was it four or five a year? Six, I don't know, I've not even been on one good enough to remember how many meetings there are.
Absolutely, I hope you're not telling us you've only been two out of six meetings. I'm sure you've been a lot more than that. Councillor Ward, sorry.
Just a comment to inform the public, I assume, I'm sure they are. Leake Town Council used to meet ten times a year, now we meet as a full council only six times a year. This meeting, it was suggested, could be backed into the back of a planning meeting which takes place in the town clerk's office, capacity twenty people. So clearly we needed to gain this space, we needed to let people speak and I'm glad people have. Can we move to the vote, please?
Yeah, absolutely. Everybody said what they want to say? Okay, so, so, Chief Sir Keith?
Sorry, Chief.
It was back in two thousand and fifteen. I was serving with the town councils as the deputy mayor. And this is when the rumours started about alterations to the hospitals. You'll have to excuse my voice, I've had a croak. The Chedle Hospital was under threat at Leake Hospital. We were hearing about Bradwell. We were hearing about Putmore. And changes that were being made. And I have to say that I was invited by councillor Palmer, who, having served over thirty years in the National Health Service at Leake Hospital, obviously carried a lot of information. She understood the job. She understood what it was all about, how it was funded. And also, she said, would you join us as the deputy mayor because it may all take over? And we want to start looking into this problem as the mayor represents as chairman the Leake Town Council. And Pam also spoke to councillor Locker, who was on the Chedle council. And we had a meeting with the CCG, Bora, Ivan Markson, two other heads from there. And they put forward their plans. They said there will be changes, subtle changes at Chedle. And we're looking to improve the Leake Hospital. We're going to make it fit for purpose. Which it drifted in very slowly. But three years on, we're seeing they are exactly the same position as they were doing then. And I have to say, in that three years while this has been drifting back in again, it's, there has been discussions, there has been meetings, it has been discussed at the Leake Town Council, what was going on. But what I have to say is that that public, the army, was empty. What we see now is that people are realising, and we as councillors have to realise too, that we have to make a move forward. I'm so glad to see this tonight, all these people here, because as Alan said, and I know in one half of years we've grown up together, he's very forceful, can be a little bit dominant at times. But he is right. If we don't stand now and make a move, we shall lose the hospital. And I have to say to each and everybody here tonight, thank you for coming, thank you for showing your support, and it's up to us now to push that forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Well, so then.
Thank you, Chair. And I'm also here tonight. There is a reason because I wanted to listen to the debate. I perfectly agree with what Keith Patterson has to say. And I agree with a lot of things that's been said tonight. Mainly what Pam, Charlotte, Stephen and the guys have been doing. Great. But what councillor John Perry does say is we haven't got a lot of influence. But what we have got is a lot of fight. We are elected on your behalf, and we will fight every step of the way. Just exactly what you want us to say and do. We will do it for you with all our hearts and soul. We have a leader in Elliot. He's like the guy in front of the forces that's getting everybody fighting for him. And they're all beating the swords against the shields. This is what we need. This is raising everybody's blood pressure to fight the cause, and this is what we need. We do and we will get this hospital back on track. Back the beds, back the services, back. And this is what we're going to fight for together. And we do need representatives asking questions. And I'm sure we will get that person who is the best person within the group fighting for us, and we will get that information back to you. We do not want to lose this hospital. My mother used to work there, fifteen years SRN, staff nurse, sister. She was a member of the League of Friends, Bors Hospital League of Friends for many, many years. Who I even might totally support it with my mail funds and CCIF funds. So I'm proving I'm of support. And I hope everybody else does too, and this support goes on and on until we win. Thank you.
Honestly, from day one. From day one, I think, as individuals have been fighting for it. I appreciate the sentimental perception from what individuals have said this evening. If this seven-stage programme is what would give people confidence that things will move forward, then that's more than fine. I was only furnished with it a few minutes ago, and I guess most people haven't seen it. But for me, it doesn't really do enough. It just challenges the CCG around their mandate and the fact that they've been acting inappropriately, which we've already all said. We've all challenged them. We've expressed a lack of trust in them. We've expressed a vote of confidence in them already. So a number of these arguments here we've already done. But if it helps, we'll do it again. And then the other points around there, the first few points around having a reaffirmed view of our views that have been expressed this evening. They've all previously been articulated. I think all individual councils have done so, the town council has done so, but it can do so again. Clearly, we can work on engagement and the media as best as we can. It does fall short in a couple of areas, I think. But before I really get on to that, one, I think we could look to maybe work better or closer with other parishes. So as councillor Johnson said, we're one of many in the area that are affected, and together we'd be stronger. So maybe through the clerk or the mayor, we can look to engage other parish councils so that we're together, and hopefully we'll have a consistent view and message. Because it's not just the people of Leake, it's the people of the Morlands who are affected, and those in the rural areas particularly. And from everything that's been said, I think, you know, also the chaplain there, Mike Jones, he put the proposal forward, which is not included here. So, and that was around ensuring that there's officer engagement at SMDC because we've got a chief executive at SMDC and directors there who should be engaged. So we should be asking SMDC what officer engagement has been taken place. If it's not sufficient, then encourage the formation of an officer working group, I think that's Mike Jones's proposal. So I think those two points should be put on there in support of the seven points, if they're acceptable to councillor Wales as the proposer. But hopefully they'll be supportable. But again, the town council won't do this in isolation, but collectively we can, and if we all work together, we're all saying the same message fundamentally. So we just need to stand together. We need to stand united and keep on fighting until we get the result that we all want.
Councilor Wales.
Part of the problem has been mixed messages, and that's the reason we're having the meeting. We're hearing different claims for the hospital and its future, its services, whether or not it's under one roof or whether it's going to be dispersed through the town. It's been reported in the local press that a large building at the bottom of Fanton Street has been purchased by a local practice at Nivedon, sat upon the Mount, been brought into the equation many times. And we know that there's a threat to the hospital and its site. We know that for sure. So I suggest we get this seven-stage programme in place. The town council's meeting again in a couple of weeks' time. We can adopt further proposals at that meeting. Hopefully the public will come along to that meeting. It's a full council meeting. And I think there's another proposal coming from Pam.
Councillor Ward, are you making a separate proposal or an amendment to this proposal? An addenda to this?
Or amendment.
Right, okay. What, I'll try to simplify it as a way in which we deal with it. Is councillor Wales happy for this to be? Yeah, okay.
Okay, I want to propose, until we're through this present crisis and while the consultation that is supposed to be starting sometime this autumn, while that's on, I want to propose that we revert back to our ten meetings a year. And that on every, at every meeting, the public are aware of when the meetings are and will have prior knowledge of when those meetings are, and that goes on every agenda at the town council.
It's point to point order. We're not able to change the number of full council meetings outside of the AGMs, I understand it. But what we can fundamentally do, as we've done tonight, is have a special meeting or an extra meeting, and of which they can be called at any time. Clearly, one of the ambitions in the seven-stage process is to have a dedicated lead on health and also a spokesperson, which will help with the process as well, and the engagement with the people of Leake and the Morlands altogether. But can I just just to clarify, whether or not I need to make a moment or not? Obviously, I've made a couple of proposals to add on to the seven that councillor Wales proposed because I think they will be useful in helping to further our cause. So I've encouraged that we include engagement with the remaining parish councils within the locality so that we can hopefully have a consistent message and work together. And two, ask SMDC what officer engagement has been to this point in time in relation to the hospital and the change in services, and whether or not it'd be appropriate to have a officer working group at SMDC. I can question to do that.
I have a second there, ma'am.
Thank you. Have you any objection? Okay, so we're okay with that. So in addition to the seven, we've got the two. We've got the two additional ones. Okay, councillor Ward.
I'd like some mention of these extra meetings to be put into the.
I can say this will come under GP and the chair of GP. Yes, we will have the extra meetings.
They should be pre-programmed.
And we will have them pre-programmed, yes. That is the only way we can do it. We can't change it at some point. Right, is everybody satisfied that we go to a vote? In that case, it's been asked for a named vote. I have prepared a list in alphabetical order in anticipation of a named vote. So our standing clerk, who I must thank because Julie, our clerk, is on holiday. So thank you for jumping into what could have been a line of dead. But I've got to say, at this point, I do thank everybody for their contributions and to the fact that everybody has behaved very, very well. I wasn't coming into this meeting with certain trepidation, but I do thank you sincerely because it's been a very, very good and very productive meeting. We'll go to a named vote, if you'd like to take that on. Okay, so is everybody in clear? We know what the proposal is plus the two additional ones. If you're voting for the proposal, you are in favour. If you're voting against it, you are against. Okay?
Councillor Atkins.
For.
Councillor Coleman.
In favour.
Councillor Enery.
In favour.
Councillor Harrison.
For.
Councillor Johnson.
In favour.
Councillor Lockett. Councillor Robert. Councillor Padmore.
For.
Councillor Povey.
For.
Councillor Tomkinson.
For.
Councillor Wales. Councillor Moore.
And I propose that councillor Wood changes the name. Thank you very much, and I think, I appreciate everybody supporting that. What we've got to do now is we have got to sit down and we've got to put some meat on the bones of this proposal. The proposal's no good without we actually start to implement the things. I totally agree with it. I think one of the first things, and I'm not proposing to do it tonight because we'll give you a little bit of time to think about it. Number four on the proposal says to appoint appropriate town council spokespersons. So are we happy that we do that at the next meeting? And are you happy that we put this on the GP agenda for discussion? Yes, okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And before you all rush off, could I just say that it really has been good to have so many people here, even the ones that haven't participated. Your supportive attendance is really appreciated. You are welcome at every Leake Town Council meeting. If you don't know where they are, they are on our website. There's a list of the meetings. So please put them in your diary and please come along because we do feel some support by the amount of people. Go on, young lady.
Is it going to be noted that there was also so many outside as well that couldn't get in because you couldn't facilitate at all?
I wasn't aware it was.
I was giving more outside than once to come in.
Oh, right. I'm sorry about that. If I hadn't known, I would have. If I hadn't known, I would have at least opened the doors and allowed them to stand by the door, but I wouldn't have. Thank you very much, everybody, and we'll be glad to meet you in the future.
There you go. There you go.